Good evening. It's 7:00 PM on July 28, 2025. This is the Town of Dartmouth Planning Board Meeting. Please note that this meeting and all meetings are being recorded. Before we begin, I'd like to state that the Planning Board voted in a public meeting to continue meeting virtually in accordance with the Governor's 2025 extension of the virtual/hybrid open meeting option through June 30, 2027. At this time, I'll start off with a open meeting, commence the open meeting on the roll call. Margaret Sweet?
Here.
Kevin Estes?
Here.
Lori Miller?
Present.
Nick Cyclepatis here. And again, Kevin Mello will join us shortly. At this time, I believe we need a motion to recess the public meeting.
It's all moved.
Motion made to recess the public meeting, second by anyone?
Second.
Second.
Made by Margaret Sweet, seconded by Kevin Estes. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Cyclepatis, yes. Motion moved, and at this point in time, we need a motion to open the public hearing.
Moved.
Moved to open the public hearing?
Motion made by Kevin Estes and seconded by Lori Miller. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
And Nick Cyclepatis, yes, which brings us to the public hearing. Before we begin, I will address the fact that Agenda Item Number One in the public hearing is a scenic roadway presentation by Eversource. We could make one more motion at this point in time to waive the reading of the legal ad if we so choose.
It's all moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Margaret to waive the reading of the legal ad, seconded by Kevin. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
And Nick Cyclepatis, yes. So that brings us to Agenda Item Number One, Scenic Roadway, and I believe from Eversource, we have Kyle, correct?
Yes, right here.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us. Dan, did you want to jump in, or should Kyle get started?
I can just start by saying this is a scenic road request under Portal Application PSR 25-2, made on behalf of Kyle Barry from Eversource Energy. This request was made for Vegetation Management Plan for standard utility pruning of trees along Tucker Road, and additionally, removal of select hazard trees along Tucker Road and Reed Road. This is done in order to obtain necessary clearance for electrical service, safety, and reliability. This is a similar request that Eversource has been making yearly, pretty much since about 2016. Timothy Barber, the tree warden, added a comment to the portal in support. The comment is listed as follows. "I have driven and walked these areas with Kyle, and I agree with the removal and pruning work that he is proposing. Eversource is also planning to plant a number of trees in specific areas that are feasible." That's the end of his comment there. Normally, Eversource continues to work with Mr. Barber through the process. All the locations are shown in the packet that the Planning Board received. If Mr. Barry would like to give an overview on what the plan is for this year, that would be great.
Sure, will do, absolutely. Good evening, everyone. Kyle Barry. I work with Eversource Energy in the Vegetation Management Department. You may have seen me in past years. I think I recognize some of you here from past meetings. So we've got a two-part plan. As stated previously, we have a pruning aspect of this plan, so we'll be pruning all of Tucker Road. And that's just more of our standard maintenance that we do about every five years on any given road in town. And that's just the road that is up on the schedule this year, just Tucker Road. And so additionally, with that, I submitted a list of hazard trees we'd like to cut down completely. They have various defects. There are a lot of ash trees listed. Unfortunately, we've got the Emerald Ash Borer that's killing all the ash trees in town. There are quite a number of those along Tucker Road in particular, various other roads as well. I included some trees on Reed Road, also a handful on Reed Road, primarily Tucker, though. I included, as well as the traditional hazard tree, something that's either gonna fall down in the road, in the wires. It's in poor condition, various defects. So I included also on this removal list a lot of smaller trees that are directly underneath the wires, brush and small trees that we've pruned severely over the years and continue to have to prune them multiple time and time again. So my list, some of the first trees on the list are a bunch of smaller trees fitting that description on a town parcel of land. And I wonder if I can share my screen to show the PowerPoint. Would that be useful to anyone? Okay.
Yes.
See if I can figure out how to do that.
Does DCTV need to allow it?
Let's see. Can you see my desktop on that end yet?
Yes.
Okay. See if I can get the PowerPoint over here. Got two screens on my end, so you should see a PowerPoint slides.
We do.
Okay, great. So this probably was included in your packet, but it's easier to just go through it here. So the first thing on my list, we've got a town parcel of land with a lot of smaller trees. I just listed them as brush. There are various species. These are all trees. All these smaller size under the 12-inch. And if you see up here, we've got them split up by size classes, 1 to 6-inch, 6 to 12-inch. And that's their diameter in 6-inch increments. So anything under that 12-inch size, I typically consider more or less brush. If it's underneath the lines, it's been severely pruned over the years. So that's the case with a lot of these small trees here. So that really increases the number of removals quickly when you start counting those smaller stems that are underneath. So I don't want to scare you with a large number of 100 removals right here. That's, you know, it's 100 small brush-type trees. So there are certainly a number of larger-sized classes you can see over here as well. So I do have some pictures to go along with this, as well as, this is just that general area. It's a town parcel of land. And I could bring up another something useful here. So it's in the vicinity of about 928 Tucker Road, right across the street. So this large parcel of undeveloped town land right here, these little triangles are representing all of those trees that we flagged for potential removal. And so we've got those smaller trees, as well as a number of actual hazard trees, the trees that are showing some major defects that tell me that they're likely to fall toward the wires, toward the road at some point in the not-too-distant future. So that's the general area there. Let's go back to the PowerPoint. This is more of that same property. I noted some of the defects that I could see. It's a little tough. It's really a wall of vegetation. If you've visited that area, it's it's pretty thick and overgrown. So at a minimum, we have to do some very heavy pruning. A lot of these, the undergrowth is encroaching up into those primary electric wires that are on top of the pole. So we've got to keep that at bay. But the best management practice really, again, is to cut down a lot of these smaller trees that are repeatedly pruned right underneath the lines that were you know, they're unsightly when we do that, I know. So I like to avoid that. It's the best management practice, just to cut them down in a lot of cases. More of that same area. Actually, got past the front wall of vegetation. So this is one of the larger trees, I guess, just beyond there. It has some defects. There are some holes in the base. It's a multi-stem maple growing just behind that front row of brush. We have an oak tree right here that already lost its top. So I was going to cut down the rest of that. It still has one big branch over the top of the lines with a broken top. It's just going to rot out and continue falling. Another view of the same location. So I tried to get a good image of kind of what it looks like with these tops trees underneath the lines. So what's left of them after we prune, a few branches underneath the communication cables, they go out over the road a bit. In some cases, the town may have to prune them as well for road clearance. So these are the type of trees I'm proposing in this area to remove.
So those are the beech trees you're gonna check out?
Yeah, there were some beech in there, correct? Are you partial to the beeches? I know it's a nice native tree.
It is a nice, it's a nice tree.
They're also suffering from a new disease, unfortunately.
Right.
Beech leaf disease.
I have one on my property that I'm hoping survives, but I don't know.
I'm hopeful of new treatments. I don't know if there's anything publicly available. I know they're working on that.
What kind of tree fell down that caused all that problem last week on Tucker Road? Was that an old tree that was a rotten tree? Because power was out for about a day and a half.
You know, I didn't review that one.
Okay.
I'm willing to bet it may have been on my list, so one of these trees may already be gone.
Right.
Yeah, it was a brutal storm we had. Was it the July 4th storm?
Yes, yes.
Brutal time. Yeah, still in this, still that same parcel of land. We got several pictures here. And I think I'm onto the next property. Let's see, Pole 41. Checking my notes here. Okay, we're on to just the next property. We've got some declining ash again at this next property, just north of, this must be near Allen's Street. Trying to bring up my map again. This parcel right here, there's a cluster of declining ash right there. Looks like another undeveloped land parcel. And I should note that most of the trees on this list, we've talked to the abutting homeowner, if there was a homeowner there, and gotten their go-ahead. There were a few exceptions where we just couldn't reach anyone. I'll point those out. Here's Allen Street. All right, we're going north of Allen Street. This is the Friends Academy property now. So we've got several trees marked along the front edge of Friends Academy.
Did you get in touch with the people at Friends Academy?
We did, yeah. Yeah, they were on board with the work.
Are you, you're obviously cutting down some trees there. Is there any chance to get the school and the students to, as part of some type of environmental program, to redo those trees?
Yeah, definitely. I think that would be that would be a great spot to do some planting, I think. There's plenty of lawn area there. We could probably move it behind the stone wall onto the private side of the property. That would probably be best in that spot, because I know it's tight with the road, between the road and the town and the wall. But that'd be great.
Students involved somehow, it would be, I think, a great program for them learning.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. I've done a little planting demo for Arbor Day at one of the, one of the primary schools. I can't remember the name now, but yeah, I'd be happy to go do a planting demo there.
Thank you.
Jotted down a few notes as I go.
All right. When you cut a tree down that is big enough to grow troublesome, like in the top picture right there, and I think I heard that you were replacing some of the trees. What kind of trees do you plant that aren't gonna just kind of lather, rinse, repeat?
Sure. Yeah, there are some shorter-growing species that I'd recommend for directly underneath the wire. If we can find a spot that's a little further off the road, or even across the street in some cases, we can get, you know, a large growing tree back in that same same area. But I agree, we don't want to repeat the same issue of planting a tree that's gonna grow 80 feet tall and put it directly under power lines where, you know, it's just gonna be constantly in conflict. So if we are gonna plant right in the power line area, there's plenty of good options for that. It's kind of a harsh roadside condition. Usually, it's fairly dry. But things like Hawthorne, Crab Apple, sometimes we can get a Dogwood. Those are short-growing trees, and there are others we can look at as well. Tree hydrangea, that's a nice one. Nice short-growing. They're flowering right now, actually. And if we go a little bit further back, there are some better options, like Japanese zelkova is a great one, pretty drought tolerant. They'll grow about 30 to 40 feet tall, so you want to put it back from the lines, maybe 20 feet, I would say. Again, just so we don't have that repeated issue. Lace Bark Elm is a good one.
Got it. Thank you.
Yeah. I get sidetracked. I'm a tree guy. More in front of Friends Academy. We've got more declining ash here. Some low clearance situations around this pole. I think I had a cherry marked right in this vicinity. So we've got some heavy growth into the lines. This is either at Friends or just the next property to the north of Friends. This is just a black cherry growing underneath and through the wires. So it'll either be pruned pretty hard, or ideally, I think we'd remove it. I think there's also trucks hitting this, if I recall. It looks like a little damage over here. See. This is just north of Friends Academy. Again, there's a large ash declining right here. This is one I just added to the list very recently before I submitted for this hearing. I drove Tucker just to see if there's anything new. So this declined significantly from last year, has about half the leaves. I'd say that it should for a healthy tree. It's a large ash. This one, I have not contacted the abutter, but it looks pretty clearly that it is a town tree. It's within a couple of feet of the pavement, so I can reach out to them. But I think it would be in your jurisdiction in this case. We're on to the, this is actually part of the Gidley Farm property here. I had a meeting with that family that owns the farm last, I want to say it was last fall, maybe, so it was quite a while ago at this point. But they were on board with some cutting on their property, you were abutting their property, mostly ash, again, in this area. Okay. This is a tough one. It's another ash tree. There's a little cemetery right here. I have not been able to get in touch with that, whoever is the caretaker of that cemetery, and just judging by the the GIS point for that tree, I mean, it's probably right at the line of private versus a town tree. I'll probably try to reach out again to the manager of that cemetery. But it, it's a borderline tree. It's probably one that the town could claim based on state law stating that any part of the tree that grows into the town right away becomes a town tree. So in other words, if the root flare goes into the town right away, the town can claim it. And see if I can get you a better location here. I guess it's next to 1157 Tucker, so we're just, just north of Friends Academy is over here. And there's this little cemetery, which you may not even notice if you're driving by. I'm sure it's probably a historic cemetery. One way or another, that ash is declining and likely dead within a year or so. I'd like to remove it. Now, this next property here, just north of that cemetery, I haven't been able to get in touch with this abutter either. We've knocked on the door a couple of times, just didn't get a response. There's a lot of brush in this location. I'd like to at least selectively try to remove some of those pieces of brush. Judging by how they're growing right now, it's not gonna be attractive after we prune them. And this is some pictures of that area. So it's very heavy growth. It's a lot like that first parcel of town land we looked at. There's sort of a wall of vegetation right at the edge of the road and underneath the lines. And some of the small trees there, there's just no effective way to prune, or no aesthetic way to prune. This is probably a good image for you right here. So that's what I'm proposing, removing a lot of those small trees. I think I'll try to do my best to preserve a screen for that house. But again, didn't refuse the work, or we just didn't get a response. So I try to leave screening if we are gonna be working in front of a house. I'm not trying to denude the whole area of any screening. More of that same lot. Can kind of, kind of see a little bit better here, really a wall of vegetation. Many stems of small trees, basically. Primarily small trees in that area. Let's see. Give you my Excel list here. This is that, that property, so something like 35 small trees. I did have one bit larger tree that was a hollow hickory. I think there's an image of that. I think I saw right here, a little bit of a larger tree. I think maybe a car struck it at some point, so it's got a hollow base. Right. And there was a neighboring property here as well that did agree. We reached out and agreed it's in the same area. So some of this brush is, we had actually talked to the abutter in there. They agreed to it. All right, I had a dead pine. This is coming up toward the bend, toward the toward the Gidley Farm, the open grassland area, heading north, just toward this tough bend. I know it's difficult to walk around, to drive around. I've been out there a few times. We've got a large limb here that would be pruned off, and right next to that, there's a dead pine. That's the top. It already fallen off. So it's just a 30-foot-tall stump, basically. All right. This is 1221 Tucker. And there's just two trees right in front of the house. There's a maple that's right in a driveway. I think there's paving on both sides of this maple, and as well as an oak tree right next to that. So I think they're having a tough time seeing out of their driveway. And for my purposes, there's basically no clearance on the wire. They actually put up a plastic guard, but which you can kind of see in the picture right here. It's usually orange. But it moved out of the way. They have a tendency to, they don't last forever. They're kind of clamped on there, and sometimes the wind will blow them off. So right now, I'd say that the wire is periodically slapping against the trunk of those trees right there. So very low clearance is the biggest issue there. There are defects as well that that I could point to. Let's see, is the next property next property right here? Looks like it's near 12, House 1227. And there's an oak tree there, similar situation as the last, just very low clearance between the power line and the trunk of that tree. So there's no, we prune it, but there's no pruning that really gets you adequate clearance. There's virtually zero clearance between the tree trunk and the power line that's there. And these are pretty high-voltage lines down Tucker as well. We don't pursue a lot of removals on the smaller side streets that have lower priority wires on them, but Tucker has, it's a major north-south route, both for traffic and for power. So that's usually how I describe it to people. If you have a major road, that's a major throughway for your traffic, it's probably important in most cases for the power as well. And the next one north of here, let me see, which one was this? House 1239. And this house recently traded, changed hands, so this is another one. I don't have permission of the newest owner, but it does look like it's in the town's jurisdiction. A town-owned treaty, just based on my GIS program and visually what it's looking like. I think there is a stone wall further behind this. So again, we've got a maple tree heavily succuring off of the trunk, which is never a good sign for its health. It usually means there's something wrong with a tree. It might be dying back from the top down. And no clearance, again, between the wire and the trunk. And that's something I'm really trying to resolve where I can, when we have, when there's our go-to is always pruning, but there's just no pruning you could do when you have an established tree that's inches away from from the power line, or in some cases, they're actually rubbing, depending on the wind. Right. And quite a few dots in this location. So you're looking at overlooking that Gidley Farm right here. And so we do have some trees marked along that Gidley Farm stone wall. Some ash that are already dead or declining, and those owners did want to keep any ash that were still reasonably healthy and not take them all at once. So anything that was halfway decent-looking, at least as of last fall, stayed. We're not planning to cut with this round of work. Across the street from this location, we've got some other large trees declining and kind of reaching over the top of this power line. So these are some pretty big trees in this area. And just the way they're growing and their condition makes it likely that they'll fall into the road/wires sooner rather than later. In that same area, more of the same. You get another view of the Gidley Farm. Also along the Gidley Farm, there's this, unfortunately, this sycamore, which I hate to cut down. But it's completely hollow. I'm surprised it's still standing. It's some very visible major defects going up and down that trunk, so it's definitely on its last legs. Just north of the Gidley Farm area, I think this is still the Gidley property. There's a couple of other trees, just low clearance. Again, we've got another situation where they put a guard up. You can just see that orange plastic guard right here. Looks like it moved. Again, they're kind of known for doing that. They only last maybe a year before the clamps kind of wear out and they move away. It's a temporary solution to these situations where we have a tree rubbing on the wire right there. Right. See if I can find the address on this one. Okay. This is still the Gidley property, but a bit north of that the actual open farm. So a few more hazard-conditioned trees. We've got an ash. And then another maple that's suffering heavily into the lines and poor clearance. So. Exactly the the kind of thing that I'm looking for. Found another. Oak right here with a major defect in the trunk. This looks like another property. We were not able to contact the owner. We reached out a couple of times and just didn't get a response. But there's at least one on this property. One of these oaks that I I really think we should take. Let's see, that's between pole ninety eight and ninety nine. Yeah, I actually took I I initially had two on on here. You can see on my on my map, but after the no contact, I. Took one off the list and just saved. That tree with a very large defect at the base. So that's what I've got for Tucker. And I've just got a few on Reed Road. Get down to that. See, find the address. Okay, ten sixty one and ten seventy seven. And we had an order sign off on both of those. We've got an ash that may already be dead. And a pine tree that looks like. I made notes, it's already dead as well. So here's the ash. Oh, the pine is across the street. You can just see it in this picture right here. So two dead trees. The third one, I think, was also a dead tree. See twelve forty two. Reed Road. Yep, dead tree homeowner signed off. So I think that one's fairly straightforward. Last one on my list. This is a large oak tree. And we've not had a response from the homeowner. It is actively rubbing against the primary right there in two different locations. The tree also has a major defect where the two. Largest limbs come together. They're poorly connected and likely to kind of break in half like a wishbone sooner or later. It's got included bark and just kind of a weak attachment. Right here, it's something we we look for in forestry is that. Poor connection of large branches in this one unfortunately has it. It's definitely a town tree. We could try to reach out to that homeowner again. Apologize. So with the section of Reed Road, we're looking at is over here.
May I ask a question? Do you do you send notices out or you just knock on the doors?
We try both.
Okay.
We we usually start with a door knock. We typically mail some notice. Request for contact if we if we don't get a response after a while. Now twelve fifty four, that's another one I just added recently. So that one, I just gave that one a knock. That one, that person has not. Received a mailing. So I could follow up again with them before we do anything. Here, I just had a better better Google image of that tree, that last one on twelve fifty four. So. It's pretty clearly a town tree. It's a foot off the road. This is my. Concern, this attachment right here. And both of those large halves of the tree are both. Basically making contact up here. And so that is all I have for my list tonight. Can I answer questions?
I'll thank you for an in-depth presentation.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? If not.
Mister Chairman, if if I could ask a couple of questions, but first. This is a public hearing, so I don't know if you want to. Open it up to comments in favor or opposed if there's anybody in the in the general public.
Yep, absolutely. That was step one. If there's anybody that would like to comment from the public, please do so now. And in the event there isn't, Dan, would you like to add anything before we proceed?
Yeah, just a couple of quick comments on on previous. Requests that were made, the electric circuits were identified in the certificate of action. This one, it just listed one. It was two underscore five three three underscore five oh three. Is that the only one that will be? Referenced for this for this application?
Yes, sir. That's that's the only circuit that contained a scenic road this year. And that was just Tucker Road. That's that's part of that that circuit you just mentioned.
Okay, thank you. And the other comments, we talked about notifying of butters. That was a note that had been added to all the previous certificate of actions. So are you. Comfortable with a no adding that's all worked on our private side of wanting property owners to be notified?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. We'll we'll notify in advance.
Okay, thank you. That that's it, Mister Chairman.
Great. I appreciate the I appreciate everyone on this at this point in time, if there's nobody from the public. And we are done with any questions. I believe we need a motion to close the public hearing. As it relates to the ever source scenic roadway presentation.
I move we close the public hearing and go into regular session.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Lori Miller, seconded by Kevin Estes to close the public hearing as it relates to scenic roadway PSR twenty five dash two. Lori Miller?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Next cycle pay this. Yes, Kevin Mello was not here for the beginning of this, which brings us now back to the. Scheduled planning board meeting. And at this point in time, we will need another motion to open. I'm sorry, we'll need a motion to recess the public need public. Sorry, we need a motion to recess the planning board meeting that we just entered. So I have a motion to recess the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Motion made to recess the public, I'm sorry, the planning board meeting by Lori Miller and seconded by Kevin Estes, Lauren.
Margaret Sweet.
All right, sorry. Second by Margaret?
Yes.
Sorry about that.
Mister Chairman, before you go on too far, I believe the motion to close and to recess was done together in Lori's motion. So I think all you need to do now is just is a motion to approve or deny the request.
For the scenic roadway?
Correct, yes. Miss Miller made a motion to close. That public hearing and resume the regular meeting.
He did.
Great. So now in the regular planning board meeting, we need a motion to approve the. Scenic roadway presentation by ever source.
Motion to approve the the tree management plan by ever source as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Lori Miller to approve agenda item number one scenic roadway by ever source. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Next cycle pay this, yes. At this point in time, Dan, please correct me if I'm wrong. We need a motion to recess. The planning board meeting that we were just in for a moment.
Yes, the regular meeting.
Yep. I have a motion. Motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Lori Miller to recess the planning board meeting. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Next cycle pay this, yes. At this point in time, we need a motion to open the public hearing as it relates to agenda item number two, application for planning board special permit PSP twenty five dash two. Again, it's a motion to open the public hearing as it relates to agenda item number two.
So moved.
Now the second.
Second.
Motion made by Margaret Sweet, seconded by Kevin Estes to open the public hearing as it relates to agenda item number two. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Next cycle pay this, yes. Which brings us now to the public hearing for agenda item number two. Before we go any further, Dan, would you like to chime in?
Yes, first, would you like to with the board like to make a motion to waive the reading of the legal ad for this one?
Sorry about that. Yes, let's take the motion, please, someone.
Second.
Motion made by Lori Miller and seconded by Kevin Estes to waive the reading of the legal ad as it relates to agenda item number two. Lori Miller?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Next cycle pay this, yes. Go ahead, Dan.
Okay, this is a special permit before the board for property located at eight thirteen State Road. Also known as map one sixty three, lots sixty two and sixty three. This is an application put forward by Zenith Consultant Engineers. The proposal before the board is for a over fifty five use. It will include seven duplexes in one single family dwelling. This property is located in the general business district and also the aquifer protection. Zone three oval lake district. Under article eighteen point three point F, the board can issue a special permit. For a senior residential service, if certain conditions are met, those conditions were outlined. In the packet to the board. The planning staff had made comments to the applicant. Those those. Comments were uploaded to the portal on July eighth. The DPW also made comments to the applicant or upload on July third. As of end of business today, we have not received any. Comments addressing those. There were also additional comments from other town departments via the online portal. Those were listed in the packet. I can go through those or for the discretion of the board if they would like to wave the. Wave those readings. So based on the not having much information back. We will, I would recommend to the board that we'll continue this, but this is a public hearing. I believe there is a representative, the consultant firm here to talk and also give the opportunity. For the public to be heard on this. I also invited Attorney Brian Cruz, Town Council for Dartmouth, and I see he is here. So if there are any questions the board might have for him as well.
All right, at this point in time, would anybody like to make a motion to waive the readings as mentioned by Dan?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion made by Kevin Mello, seconded by Margaret Sweet to waive the readings as stated by Dan, Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Next cycle pay this, yes. At this point in time, I'd like to invite the representative on behalf of this project to speak before us. You can introduce yourself and get started. Be great.
Good evening, Jamie Bissonette from Zenith Consulting Engineers for the record. So Mister Giosa is absolutely correct. We've received several links or uploads with. Comments from multiple departments and we just wanted to seek some clarification on the roadway width. Prior to continuing on our end and making these changes for the next and middle. We, when we were looking at it, do you mind if I share my screen? I'll I'll put the plans up so everyone can see it and we can discuss if that's all right. Okay. All right, so the plans. The proposed plan has a twenty four foot wide roadway layout with a sidewalk on the side. With the with the dwelling units so that they can gain access out to state road. The question that we're running into is whether we should reduce the width of the travel aisle or not. There's some question as to because we're in the Aqua for Protection District. There's a viewpoint of reducing the amount of impervious by potentially getting rid of the sidewalk or. Reducing the width of the roadway. But we also have some comments from the fire department and the safety officer. See, it seems that they're happy with the twenty four foot width. The safety officer is kind of looking for no parking signs to be added to one side of the road. So. We're trying to get the the changes done as as noted, including doing some test pits that are witnessed with DPW. Prior to the next meeting, but wanted to get the board's opinion on the roadway width so we can make sure that we get this addressed, you know, in one one swoop.
I have a question. You know, what's the benefit of reducing the roadway and the request to reduce? And the what I want to share is that. My concern ultimately is what other authorities have basically commented is that twenty four feet is preferred. And then there's a bigger picture here. This is this is an early project. And perhaps a bigger plan of Route six and we're setting the tone in many ways of what's going to be asked upon us in the future. And or what's going to be approved or not. So what's the net benefit? Are you looking to decrease the amount of impervious surface by offering us a concession to reduce the roadway width? Is that? Is that the ultimate point?
No, actually, we're we're hoping to keep the twenty four foot width. We're, there's been some comment, I think, from DPW. Suggesting going down to twenty two, possibly even twenty feet in width for the roadway. And we're not necessarily opposed to it. We just want to get the. The board to tell us which direction they'd prefer that we move forward with so that we can do it properly. With our calculations, our profiles and plans. So that we can move forward on our on change, on our changes and revisions.
Understood. Well, it's public knowledge. I'm not an architect nor am I an engineer, but my concern for any reduction, regardless of who would recommend it. Is any reduction in width runs the risk of. Hindering to some degree the line of sight and or how a vehicle. Comes in or exits. And if it's happening at the same time, the risk is going to bottleneck to Route six. So. My perspective to my board and just being public about my opinion is this is not. A project, nor is any project along Route six one where we want to look at narrowing roadways, in my opinion. If there's only one point of access in and out such as this project, but I'm happy to hear from the rest of the board.
May I ask a question, Mister Chairman?
Of course.
I have a question about parking. I know how many parking spots you have, but what about guest parking? What about? And I. I am far twenty foot foot road, twenty four feet, because. Where are additional people gonna park? Let's say the guy down the end is having a party. Where are they gonna park?
So it appears from the safety officer and that his his assumption is probably correct that. Ensuring one side of the street be left as no parking. Would allow one side of the street to allow for shoulder parking if need be. So if you didn't have enough spaces. It between your garage and on site and you needed extra, I'm I'm guessing that people would park somewhere along the edge of the road. And that would still allow people to get by without incident as long as they're not parking on both sides of it. So that's what the safety officer suggested and I tend to agree with their opinion on that.
So. Let me just clarify this. So. Let's say some not around the cul-de-sac, but further on, if those people need to park. You're saying on one side, we're going to put no parking spots.
Correct, no parking signs.
But. Well, no, no parking signs, but that it. Okay, I just think that there's probably not enough parking here. Just looking at it fast. How many spots do you have altogether? Thirty thirty, did you say?
Well, there, so each unit is required to have two. So yes, there are thirty spaces.
And that's and that's including, you are including because one car can park in the garage, correct?
That's correct, yep. So I that's the same requirement with residential housing in a subdivision or pretty much anywhere. If you if. In if you have a subdivision and they have two parking spaces and there's additional people that come. They would typically park on the sides of the road. This is the same width as a standard road.
I understand, but again, as as the chairman says, this this subdivision. If you want to call it that, goes out to Route six. So it's a little different because of the traffic.
Certainly.
And that's my concern.
Understood.
I'd like to add that by no means am I well versed in the language that we have for traffic and safety, but. I'd like to add that, um, by no means am I well-versed in the, um, language that we have, um, for traffic and safety, but. I honestly believe that the most southerly border of the first two buildings, somewhere between. The first two buildings on the left, I'm sorry, on the first two buildings, yeah, on both sides, go to the right a little bit. Splitting the distance between the two buildings on this side of the street and across the street, there needs to be something that says no parking from here to corner. Or else you're gonna end up with a, a one-lane road for people to go out and in on.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree with that. Yep, I, I don't disagree. I'm not really sure, i- in, in thinking about it, and again, we're open to suggestions here. I know that this is, this is a little different. It's an over fifty-five special permit. And we definitely, like, we came in early on with a preliminary filing and to seek the board's suggestion. Uh, we're open to, to comments and suggestion here. So if there's direction the board would like us to go in, by all means, please share it. I, I'm not sure a parking lot of, or off, off-road parking is necessarily the solution. Um. But may, maybe some, maybe some. Off, some parking spaces over in this area here that you can pull off the side of the roadway and park. Um, in line with the road would be the solution that we're looking for. Probably fit. Several spaces between here and here and might be able to get that, something like that to work. And we could even gravel them, um, so that they, they don't look bad.
Do you have the capabilities with the land to put, uh, some guest parking? Additional guest parking on this?
The, well, it, it depends. Uh, in front of the units would be difficult, um. Because you'd be parking in front of the main part of the unit, not the garage. That's why I was thinking if, maybe if we carve out a section over in here, I don't know if you can see my cursor.
I do.
In this section of the roadway, maybe put some that run parallel off the side of the road. We could put in something nice, um, possibly even have some fencing or, or, or some landscaping screenage. And Dan, maybe we could even work with like pervious pavement over the, um. Pervious pavers over there, something that would allow infiltration for the aquifer, but, uh, allow if overflow parking is needed. Uh, have something over there.
Mister Chair, if I could just make a point, um, hopefully of clarification?
Of course.
Um. So just, just to follow up, so the DPW is the one that made a recommendation for less roadway width. They were the only ones, um, that asked for that reduction. Their thought was, yes, it's in the aquifer, you know, help reduce impervious area. Um, a normal access road would be twenty-four feet, so this is in, in. In compliance with what we would normally see for an access road, again, um. Like, like Jamie said, the fire chief, the police, um, safety officer are both in agreement with the. The twenty-four foot width. As far as the aquifer, they are meeting the requirements. They are not asking for any waivers on the lot coverage, so. They are able to hit the lot coverage requirements with what they are proposing. Um, they're not asking for a waiver or any kind of variance from the zoning board in this regards. Again, if you put signs, um, on one side of the road for no parking, maybe, um, like Mr. Bissonette said. Maybe, maybe you can do some pervious pavers, maybe some crushed stone that won't increase the, um, the lock coverage, um. And then you have the other side of the road for pavement. So that's, that's where the comments are coming from, from the various departments. Um, Jamie, do you have it off? Off something you can see quickly how long that road would be, just to kind of gauge how many cars you'd be able to park alongside there?
So we have stationing on this, uh, on this page here. Um, you can see the one hundred foot, the two hundred foot and the three hundred foot. So a section like this is probably a hundred feet. In here, maybe ninety to a hundred feet. So.
About five spaces.
Yeah, I was gonna say four to five spaces. In this area.
Well, I'd like to see that. I don't know about board members too, but I would like to see that.
Yeah, I, I wish you, Margaret, I think none is, um. Just not all that acceptable for this project or any other projects of this nature. Um, I think we need to see some. And, and ultimately, it, it's not that we're being. Picky over parking. We're trying to mitigate any restriction in the flow of traffic. Because pulling out onto Route six is a lot different than pulling out on the Smithneck Road.
Exactly.
Yep, no, understand. Do, does the board have a, a preference over like a crushed stone or permeable paper?
I don't, I, I. Go ahead, Margaret. No, I don't. I think whatever planet thinks is best would go with.
I, I'll, I'll just, I do, I do have a comment. I, um, it, it's, it's early, but my answer to that question. Um. Is that it depends on who's taking care of the property. We haven't talked about that yet.
Certainly.
So, um, if the tenants are gonna be responsible. And they're gonna look at each other when it's not being managed, then pavers are gonna be better for the town long-term. So it, my answer has a lot to do with. Who's maintaining and responsible for the land. We haven't gotten there yet.
Yes, I agree. Okay, understood.
I would add from my perspective, uh, and this is just my perspective, the more permeable the better. Since you are heavy into the zone three and, and close to zone two even.
Yep.
I would go with the pavers because if you go with crushed stones, um, they're gonna get thrown out onto the main twenty-four foot road. So I think pavers are safer.
Right.
Good point, Lori.
I, I also feel that pavers will, um, will capture any spillage of oil or. Um, gasoline or anything that might happen in that area and serves better protection for the aquifer.
All right. So I think on my end of things, I'm happy to go over the plans if the board wants. I know the board has the plans and we did the preliminary. Review of this months back. Uh, I, I do have quite a bit of work to finish up, uh, to address all the comments and happy to reach out to Dan to work through those. Um, and if, if you guys have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'm just gonna get back to work and, and get these plans. Uh, corrected to the point where, um, you know, the board can hopefully make a vote.
I have a question, if you don't mind.
Certainly.
You, o- only because it's, it's very clear that it's, it's a lively question. Can you shed any light on what the goal is here in terms of property management and ownership?
Yes, so my understanding is that there'll be an HOA that will be started and set up between the housing units. Uh, with the units themselves and that they'll have, uh, professional landscaping, they'll have trash, trash removal. Um. And, and I do understand that you guys will be looking for some draft documents to review. So I will talk with my client about having his attorney draft up some for the board to.
Great, much appreciated.
Mister Chair, if, if I could speak on that, if you don't mind? Thank you. Uh, good evening. Uh, Brian Cruz, Assistant Town Council for the record. Um. This is the reason Dan asked me to be here. Um. This is not a subdivision. The land has to maintain, me, maintained in singular ownership. Uh, because it is one lot with one special permit.
Hmm.
As a result, you cannot have an HOA.
Oh, okay.
The options are, it's a, it's a, it's a rental situation and you have a management company running the whole site. Or they set up as a condominium. Those are pretty much their options. Uh, but it's a single lot and the land itself and all the common features always have to be main and common ownership. Under one of those two scenarios. Um, there are no separate lots. There's no, um, separate, uh, entity that would be created solely to own, uh, the common features. Um, at best, the individuals living here would own. The interiors of their buildings under a condo situation, or else they're just renters. Um, but it's not a subdivision. And they couldn't build a subdivision with separate lots in this area because it's not allowed by zoning. Um, you can have, um, detached units in a fifty-five plus, uh, special permit, that's absolutely fine. But it still has to remain as one lot under one ownership of that law. Um, so they're gonna have to figure out how they want to handle that, but an HOA is not possible. Um. That being said, I would also add that when you guys are thinking about conditions. You should anticipate the possibility in the future that zoning could change. Which could allow them to turn this into a subdivision post facto. Um, if in the future residential, uh, development is allowed generally in the general business district. Then they could potentially seek to convert this into a subdivision. Um, and so you may want to anticipate that and how you, uh, do your conditions, whether it's including that. Or accounting for how that would happen, um, in terms of the creation and HOA at that point. Um, but as it stands now, uh, this is one lot with, uh, one owner and HOA is not a possibility.
Understood. It, my, my client's intentions are to, are to turn it into a condo. And have exclusive use areas behind the units and in the driveways, so I, I apologize for misspeaking on that. I'll have to talk to their council and find out what the proper term is for our responsibility, but it would be similar to, uh. It would be where the condo owners would have some type of an association to take care of onsite needs.
Well, you would have a property management, wouldn't you?
Yeah, well, the, it would either be a property management or something along those lines. And I'll find, I'll, I will get those details provided. Um, and I apologize, but this, the intention is for this to be a condo, a site where each person would be able to buy their own unit. And own, uh, and have exclusive, exclusive use of their driveway, their steps and their patio in the backyard.
And, uh, board members, I would suggest then, um. That one of the conditions be that no, uh, s- uh, sale of individual condo ownership can occur until the master deed. And, um, all relevant condo bylaws have been, uh, approved by this board and recorded. Um, I don't think you guys need to get into the details about, um, a lot of how the condo would operate. But you do want to ensure, for example, that the master deed does reference the fifty-five plus age restriction, for example. Um, so, um, given that that's how the structure would be set up, I, I, I would think you guys would want to, um. Have a look at that, uh, before they can finalize them. Um, this is somewhat. Equivalent to how you guys would do an OSRD. It's kind, it's, you know, it's, it's an analogous situation. It just happens to be that there isn't a, a, um. Bylaw or subdivision regulation scheme set up to lay out in detail how you guys go about do this. So you are gonna be somewhat. Um, creating this as you go. Um, but keep those other situations in mind, it's like analogous examples of how you might want to ensure that this, that gets done properly. But to the extent that you want to have certain things in, because there isn't anything in regulations or bylaw about this. Uh, you will need to ensure that those, um, requirements that you want are actually placed as conditions on the special permit.
Well, Brian, when we get to that point, um, this is something that we could send by you to make sure that it's okay. All right, thank you, Brian.
Sure.
Can we be, um, can, can we just go back for a minute, Brian, and just. Repeat, especially for the public to be clear that the options here are either the units are rented. And the property is owned by an individual and managed by the individual or a company, but they're rentals, right? Or the pitch from them is that they are condos, individual condos. And a master deed obviously, and an HOA will be formed and all will be part of the special permit. And then there'll be.
Correct.
Conditions on the special permit.
It, it, it. Yeah, the, the, I wouldn't call it an HOA. It's a, it's a condominium and master deed. Um, and, and, and the reason why I want to be clear on that is. Um, you, as a general matter, um, towns can't tell, um, landowners how they want to deal with ownership. So you can't say these have to be rentals or these have to be owned. Um, so they can decide how they want to do that. Uh, but. They are limited by the special permit and the underlying zoning and general business that they can't have individual lots owned by individual owners. Um, so the entire site is gonna be owned by an entity, whether that is the management entity for the renters. Or it is the condo association. Uh, that each unit owner is a part of. Um, so that's, that's the only limitation they have. They have to decide how they want to set up the common ownership of the site.
Thank you.
Um, I have another question, uh, for the engineer. Um, these, these, uh, units have three bedrooms in each, correct?
That, yes, that is what is shown on the architectural.
Okay, so they have three bedrooms in each and over fifty-five, they can have, they can have, they're allowed to have children there, correct?
Uh, so per, per, this is, you know, a little deep dive. Um. As a general matter, you cannot restrict housing by age because that's a violation of federal civil rights law. Your options under federal civil rights law as exemptions are fifty-five plus or sixty-two plus. Fifty-five plus has to have one person in the unit that's fifty-five plus. Sixty-two plus, everyone has to be. So you can have kids living in a fifty-five plus unit.
That's.
As possible.
Well, that's what I thought, and that's why I'm a little concerned because they are three bedrooms. And so if you do have children there. I'm thinking, I'm thinking now of school buses, okay, because, um. You, if you have children and let's say each one has a child, which they could have because. Our board is, uh, working on over fifty-five and over sixty-two, so we're pretty, pretty good about what it takes and what it doesn't. So I'm kind of concerned about if the school bus has to go down there. That's why I was a little surprised, Mister Bissonette, when I opened it and, and looked at it. That they're having three bedrooms. Because, you know, it's, uh, it's, you know, and, and if you do have children there, you don't have any place for them to go. Now, I see that there's a, an area that you could have grilling and all. Could you point that out to me where that is?
I can, I'm gonna have to change. So we're showing in this area over in here. And we wanted to keep, we were proposing to keep the back area in here wooded with walking trails. In the backside, so we were gonna have, we were gonna go through and create walking trails through the woods for people to walk around and then back over in here. Um, outside of the fence area, we were gonna make this kind of a common area for people to, to grill and. Uh, possibly put in bocce cords or something along those lines.
Well, I, I would think that if you're gonna have some children there and you are gonna have some children there, you, you, you definitely are. Then you might want to think of doing something else in the back if you can.
Okay, I'll look at that.
If you don't, and the other question I have is, you know, you're in a lot of ledge there. Did you, uh, do soil, soil borings already to see if you're gonna?
We, we've dug, I'm gonna scroll back to a different sheet so I can show you. Existing conditions is gonna probably be best. We have dug test pits, um, here, 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 here. And. Uh, that's it. We've dug these four test pits. We do know this, there's definitely ledge outcrop. There's no doubt about it. The adjacent site. Um, I believe they're actually working the ledge outcrop. Um, so yes, we're, we're aware. This wetland is actually on, uh, ledge outcrop. It's kind of a depression in the top of the rock. Um, this is one of the highest points on site. It's just the waterfalls in that and, and has created an isolated wetland. Uh, but yeah, we have, we do have ledge, uh, so we know that there may be some area that it does have to be hammered out. Um.
You'd hammer it out, not blast it out?
Uh, we're, yeah, we, we're hoping that it doesn't need to be blasted. The, the hope is that you can hammer it out and keep working. Uh, the site blasting is expensive and, um. Kind of, it's, it's a pain, you know, so hammering would be the preferred method here.
Okay, uh, I, I do really like the owner to consider something about children. Because you've got three bedroom units there, so you've got, uh, quite a few bedrooms in there.
Okay, I will definitely bring that up and get some answers.
Thank you.
Anybody else before we reach out to the public? Dan, is now a good time to let the public chime in if anyone's present?
Would agree with that, yes.
Yeah, so at this point in time, if anybody from the public is with us and would like to ask any questions and or comment on this project, please go ahead and do so. And I don't believe we have anyone. Any further questions before we ask for the next motion? Actually, before we make the motion, uh, to the engineer, um, you know, we as a board probably have one opinion in terms of, um. How far out to continue this? Um, do you mind if I ask you what you think is realistic, um, for you and what you know you have ahead of you?
Um, I'm thinking from a realistic standpoint, I need it at least a month. So if you have a meet, I, I, I believe you meet probably twice a month, so I, I would look to skip a meet. So if you have a meet, I I believe you meet probably twice a month, so I I would look to skip a meeting at least. And if I can't be ready for the meeting in a month, I would uh ahead of time request a continuance.
Perfect, I I think that's reasonable, uh, as a board, are we okay with that? We'll go to late August with the continuance, knowing that he'll reach out to us if he cannot. Uh, if he's not prepared for that meeting.
I'm fine with that, Mr. Jeff.
That's fine.
Alright, so at this point in time, we had no questions from the public, no further questions from us. Uh, both the proposer or the representative, and we agree that we'll push it till the end of August, which gives them approximately four weeks. To get the materials together for us. Brian, anything further from you before we ask for the motion?
No, I I think um, once once they give you a better sense of how they conceptualize this as a. As a ownership or rental situation, um, then you guys can start thinking about conditions and I'm happy to take a look at them. Uh, when you bounce those around.
Much appreciated, Brian. Great, thank you so much. So at this point in time, as a board, we need a motion to close the public hearing as it relates to the application for the uh special permit PSP twenty-five dash two.
Mr. Mr. Chairman, um, we don't, we want to, we want to continue, but if the 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 meeting at the end of August would be August twenty-fifth, so the motion would be to continue to August twenty-fifth. If the board.
The motion to continue is going to occur before we close the public hearing?
Yeah, we're not gonna, we don't want to close it because we're going to, we're gonna discuss it.
So we need that motion for continuance to August twenty-fifth, please.
Still moved.
Seconded by?
Okay.
Motion made to continue until August twenty-fifth by Lori Miller, seconded by Kevin Estes, Lori Miller?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Mello?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes.
Right, thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and presentation.
Thanks, Jim.
Is Brian still on?
I am.
Hi, Brian.
Hello.
Nice to see you again.
You too. Long time.
Long time.
Um. Okay, guys, just stop, just remember that it's not a subdivision, it's a special permit, so you guys do have the deadlines and that they end up drawing out farther. Um, in terms of any time, they will have to get um the waiver for the uh filing deadline. Hopefully you guys have otherwise to do the decision with the town clerk. I'm sure there'll be a minimum for that, but just remember we are, even though it feels like a subdivision. You really are dealing with a special permit.
Yeah, the ninety days will take us to pretty much the end of September, so if we get to the August twenty-fifth. We should be able to uh make a determination if an extension would be warranted.
Yep, okay.
Brian, much appreciated.
No problem, guys. Have a good night.
Good night. Thanks, Brian.
Alright, um.
Alright, guys, uh. I'll leave you, I'll leave you to all the fun stuff.
Kevin, thanks for joining us.
No problem, anytime.
Much appreciated, Kevin, we uh we may need you on that August twenty-fifth just because of some forecasted absences, so please keep that on your radar.
Yep, I've got it written down, so shouldn't be a problem.
Thank you so much.
Sorry, guys, have a good night.
Good night, Kevin.
Um, just just to uh decrease the confusion on my side, we made a motion to continue in the public hearing. Do we need a motion to go back to our planning board meeting?
Yes, I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Margaret Sweet and seconded by Lori Miller to resume the normal planning board meeting of July twenty-eight, two thousand twenty-five. Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes. Brings us back to our planning board meeting. Uh, we're on to administrative items. And just a quick note before I forget, um, the staff, uh, our staff in the planning department. Basically asked that I mentioned tonight, if we are aware that we're gonna be missing any future meetings. That if we let them know ahead of time, it's only gonna help matters, so. Um, I did speak with Dan this afternoon in regards to myself in an upcoming meeting that's questionable. If any of you know of an upcoming absence, just let Dan or Ross know via email or, you know, message, et cetera. Um, brings us to administrative item number one. Release of surety PSUR twenty-five dash one, Saltwind Acres, Dan, you want to speak on that?
Sure, um, this is. A request to release the remaining balance of a cash surety for the Saltwind Acres definitive subdivision. Um. The applicant is requesting that the amount of five thousand nine hundred thirty-six be released. Uh, that request was made on July tenth. Um, the DPW has reviewed that, um, they are in agreement that all remaining items have been addressed. The last two being uh bound certification letter that they received. As well as the roadway as built drawing. Uh, so the. Motion would be in front of you would be to release the remaining surety from five thousand nine hundred thirty-six dollars down to a zero balance.
Any questions? And or motion?
Motion to release the uh surety.
Motion made by Kevin Estes to release the surety as stated, do I have a second?
Uh, Dan, I have a question.
Sure.
We did receive in writing from DPW, right?
Correct.
I'm trying to.
It's in, it's in an email, it's in an email. They 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 zeroed out the surety statement. And then they confirmed it with the email.
Okay, should we, to be on the safe side, get that in writing to have?
I I I asked that of them. They said this was the. The normal procedure for this.
It is?
That's that's what they stated, because I asked, I said, do I need a letter from from you? Stating that, and they said they usually just give the balance to say zero and they followed up.
In the past, we've always received an email, uh, a a letter. Can you make a copy of that email? Is that possible and attack and attach it to this?
Yeah, it's it's in the packet.
We have the statement.
Yeah, I just, I I'm uncomfortable with an email. We've in the past, I've always. Seen a formal letter sent to us stating everything.
That's that, I I would, I would tend to agree with you, I asked that question of the DPW.
Well, well, I I agree with Lori and I I also agree that we've gotten a letter. So Dan, maybe you need to write them and tell them we do want a letter, we can probably vote on it tonight. But I think that we, I think Lori is correct. And we have gotten letters in the past, and I think in the future we want letters, and I think we want a letter for this one, too.
I will, I will, I will follow up again.
I could withdraw my motion uh and amend it.
Please, if you could, Kevin.
To uh to reflect that we uh I I make a motion to approve the surety pending a uh. Written confirmation from the Department of Public Works of zero surety remaining.
Thank you.
And that we were, we will approve that administratively? Uh, Dan will take care of that.
Oh, yeah, he's making the motion that it that it's done based on receiving that letter, so I will follow up. I will, I will. Request of the DPW that it was mentioned by the board that they they want to see a a letter signed. Um, by whoever needs to sign it down there and I will get that added to the. Through the file.
We're just covering all the bases because.
No, I agree with you, I asked, I I I I asked the same questions. And you can see what I what I got per responses, so. Alright, so yeah, I have, I have no problem asking again.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you.
Ask until you get the desired answer. We have a motion made by Kevin Estes. Um, do we have a second?
A second.
Alright, so motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Lori. That Dan reaches out to the DPW and receives something in writing, a letter specific to the surety as mentioned. Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes. Brings us to agenda item number two, minutes. Do I have a motion?
File and accept. You're accepting file?
Do I have a second?
Second.
But was that Margaret?
Second.
Oh, there's more, okay, motion made by Kevin Estes, seconded by Margaret Sweet to accept and file the minutes. Uh, Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes. Brings us to number three, correspondence, Town of Westport. Any questions and or motion?
Well, um, what is this? This is correspondence. Um, I move to acknowledge and file.
Second?
Second.
Motion made by Lori to acknowledge and file correspondence, seconded by Kevin Estes, Lori Miller?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes. Brings us to number four for your informational business, new business, I'll let Dan talk about incoming ZBA applications and a few of the other items below.
Uh, this was an easy one this month, no new incoming zoning applications and no new decisions.
Appreciate that. Any subcommittee reports?
Uh, we had a. Serpent meeting on Wednesday. And I forwarded a bunch of information and links to uh. To uh Dan and Russ.
Much appreciated, Kevin. Um, the planner's report. Uh, Dan, you want to proceed with that?
Um, just just a couple of things, uh, we talked last meeting about a date to run the workshop for. Um, the. Proposed modifications, revisions to site plan review. Um, I talked to a bunch of department heads that I thought were critical to be as part of that discussion. So what we are hoping and looking at is um at the concept plan review meeting. On August nineteenth, um. Usually usually at about ten AM in the morning. Um, I talked to Lori briefly about it today, Kevin, I'm not sure how that works with your schedule. You want to take a look and get back to me on that? I can follow up tomorrow.
Yeah. I'm looking right now, if I if I recall, I. Yeah, I'm gonna be traveling.
Nineteenth, okay. Um, if not, it would get pushed to September, I don't know if you'd like us to to begin the process and. We can report back to you or if you'd like me to push it to.
Alright, I I don't want to hold it up.
Okay. Alright, um, I will, I will reach out to everyone to to confirm that and I will, I will let everybody. Know the the results of that. Um, as far as items for. Um, what we've talked about, about the overlay over fifty-five, affordable housing, higher density um implementation. Um, Ross and I have worked in the office, I know a few of you have come in, saw kind of the plans that we've been working on. Um, if anybody's interested in coming this week, uh, Ross is on vacation. Um, so I would just ask that if you want to reach out before you head out, just because I could be in and out of meetings. Um, the majority of the time I will be in the office if anybody is interested in coming in and going over some of those plans, um. But like I said, I do have a few meetings here and there, so. If anybody's interested, I would just ask that um you reach out before I end down, I don't want to have you come down um. And I'll be ready. Also, I will reach out in regards to the surety, um, I'm assuming I should be able to get that letter pretty quick tomorrow. I will print that out, we will need um signatures from. Um, I know Nick Nick is away after today, so I'll need signatures from. Margaret, Lori and Kevin on that, so I can reach out via email to let you know when that's ready. Um, for you to come in and sign for that as well.
No problem. Um, may I just make a comment on why I want it in writing, because in the past. And Lori will remember, we've had some problems, not necessarily with DPW. But with surties. And we we never want to have that problem again.
Yeah, I agree.
No, no problem, like I said, I I asked that same question.
I I'm sure.
So 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 I'm in a complete agreement with you and I will. Make sure I point out that it was not asked just by me, but also of the board.
Yeah, we we want to have everything documented.
Sounds good.
You you can tell them the board voted on it, because we did, right?
Right.
But put a little weight behind me.
That's right, a lot of weight.
Hey, when you say a lot of weight, I feel like.
Speaking for myself, I'm speaking for myself, Nick.
I feel like you're picking on me with a lot of weight comment.
No, I'm talking about me.
I'm only kidding. You're talking figuratively, I was talking literally. Alright, Dan, any um? Any anything else from your perspective?
That's it from from my end.
Okay. Um, I don't, I don't have much to share, uh, a few things I'll say is I I will have one or two upcoming absences, I'll let Dan and Ross know ahead of time. The first one that I'm certain of is the next meeting. Um, the meeting after that, I'm quite confident I'm present, and then early September. Um, I might be absent on this uh Thursday through Tuesday, which means I would miss that meeting, but I'll let you guys, I'll let Dan and Ross know ahead of time. And um, I'll communicate with Kevin Mello as needed. And um, I just think one of the. Comments that I want to make, and it's brief, and I I I know it's on everybody's mind, is. This is not exactly. A project that's indicative of what. We meant by increased density or the scope that we've discussed or or tried to describe that we want to happen along the Route Six corridor. But by all means, it's a special permit, it it might set. It's gonna set. An example, if you would, on a smaller lot that's looking for some opportunity, so. We gotta think long term uh to Margaret's point, with everyone's point about the parking and the school bus and the fifty-five and the two children on the second floor versus the sixty-two. No children, no buses, these are all big deals, so um. I think if we continue to think this way and continue to raise these concerns, we'll probably decrease the likelihood of us making. Not errors, but decisions now. That maybe are not consistent with the learning curve over the next five to ten years as Route Six does develop some, so. I think we're doing a great job and I appreciate the engineer because he listened to us. And I felt like he heard us and he's gonna. Kindly get back to us in respect to what we shared, so I thought it was a good presentation and a good outcome so far. Other than that, I don't have much more to share, I'm happy to hear anybody if there's anything else you folks want to share. And if not, at eight twenty-six PM on July twenty-eighth, my twenty-third anniversary. I'll take that motion.
Happy anniversary.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
And many more.
Thank you, thank you. That's up to her, I'm gonna stay with her as long as I can. Thank you. We need a magic motion, guys.
And it will be to August eleventh, just just for the next meeting schedule.
I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Margaret Sweet, seconded by Kevin Estes to adjourn, Margaret Sweet?
Yes.
Kevin Estes?
Yes.
Lori Miller?
Yes.
Nick Cyclopatis, yes. Dan, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Before we leave, really, really appreciate, I mean, I haven't taken advantage of it other than talking to you today, but. Um, the town should know and we, the board, appreciate the effort that you and Ross have put to print large scale maps. And to educate not only the board, but anybody else on what's before us as we make these decisions, so. Great job by you and Ross, making that information available and opening the door to us.
Well, thank you, and I appreciate all the input from the board members as well.
Alright, guys, good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Everyone, bye-bye.